We'll go ahead and hold the evening's segment. Today is Monday, September 12th, 2016. I call upon Potter County Attorney General. Today, we have Pat Jean Hudson from Pleasant Valley Church, but he was six. So Sandra has...I asked Sandra and she said yes. So he will please rise for the impact of his statement. If you may stand in for the judge.
Hello, Mr. attorney. Dear Lord, be present in this place today and help us to do our very best for you. Give wisdom to our court and bless them as they serve our county. And dear Lord, thank you for all our law enforcement and first responders as they offer themselves for the safety of others. And be with those serving our country, both at home and abroad, and be with their families as they serve. Help all of us who serve to be careful, frugal, and true servants to those that we serve. In your blessed name we pray. Amen.
Holy Legitimately, the United States of America, and we should be a republic for which the chance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor and the Texas flag, and the legitimately to be Texas, one state under God, one entity indivisible.
Who went on the bench and voted for the other three?
I know, I know. He told me to.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is recognition of minutes by the office, 22th, 26th, and 28th, September 8th, 2016, Potter County officials for improvement. So if you want to add to or correct on those. No, so recognized. Number two is the vouchers. Consider an act upon the approval of the amendment of vouchers processed by the county attorneys, County Audit Committee, for the period of August 17th, 2016 through September 7th, 2016. Check numbers 170375 through 170741, and line up ranks first, 7690 through 782, number 3, number 17044444 dollars per cent.
Will we approve the vouchers as presented? We need these right here paid after the next class, we're loading on to the final containment to close out Baxter Building. I've got it in my office right now. It's a little bit of coding, we're having issues with that. You want to speak to the officials?
Okay, any other questions, comments, and a motion in the second? On the paper, which one? Interest report to recognize interest report. Is there anything unusual on that page? We don't have it on. Okay.
You had it easy.
Some days.
Some days. Okay, let's so recognize elections to consider an offer from Gray County to purchase surplus jacket envelopes from the Elections Office.
Yes, these are the jacket envelopes. They're pre-printed, this is the size we did it no longer use, and so we sent it to auction. So it did not seem like a good choice because it has to go to somebody who still uses these, which the chances of them being in auction was pretty slim. So I do have an offer to purchase 2,000 of them for $200. And I figure that beats a kick in the head.
I hear you. So... I didn't get kicked in the head, I could say that. So I need a motion on this, please.
Look, we extend Gray County's offer to purchase surplus jacket envelopes for $200.
A motion and a second on paper, Rachel and... Here's your jackets back.
I can have some.
I know. Okay, number five, public hearing proposed tax rate this for year 2016, 2017. Do conduct a public hearing on the proposed tax rate of 0.66402 for $100 value election this for the year beginning on October 1st, 2016. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to make a public comment on this matter? Number one. Okay, the date is to announce September 26th, 2016, at 9:00 a.m. is the date and time for the final vote on adoption of the tax rate. But all of you do care? Okay, number six. Let's put this debate once and for all, I don't know how this is just going on. I request for use of courthouse lawn to consider an act upon the request for use of Potter County Courthouse lawn for community prayer gathering for local, state, federal government leaders. Shannon got a phone call from Ms. Chavez who wants to use the courthouse lawn on someone's Saturday. Right, Shannon, do you know?
She didn't have a date yet.
She didn't have a date yet. Anyway, in my opinion, the court, people have come to me before and asked in the last year and a half, and I've gotten some backlash from that from a certain person who likes to get on Facebook and tries to get on, and they'll always email and mash me, but it's okay because it's public property. I mean, I really, I just gave them my blessing to do, they were having a picnic or having a show, whatever it was. So what the court needs to do, Scott, is to give someone permission to say, yeah, do it, or say it doesn't matter.
Yeah, certainly the court can do that, that's a matter within its discretion. The elephant in the room is the prospect of picking and choosing who gets to use property for speech-related events. Once it's up, and of course, the courthouse lawn has historically been recognized under First Amendment law as a public forum, the quintessential public forum. So it's, once you have an area designated as a public forum, the government can be in the business of saying, oh, your speech is okay, but yours is not. So, and for, to get back to your question for purposes of practicality, yes, the court has the authority to designate a particular person to receive and approve those applications. You know, if the court wanted to impose requirements on security or anything like that, you could do that, or you could choose not to. But yes, in answer to your question, the court does have authority to designate a particular person, probably the county judge, to accept those applications and grant permission for use.
So I would propose that, or surmise that anybody asking to use it eight to five Monday through Friday, they would absolutely have to have permission.
Yes.
But anytime after five or on the weekend, it's pretty much an okay thing, whatever they want to do, with a few exceptions.
Yeah, I think you would want to secure agreement that they clean up after themselves, that they not damage the property.
We've got a policy the court's already adopted for the use of, these grounds are for score.
Right, right. And certainly, the requirements of that policy would need to be followed by anyone wanting to use it.
Okay, so even though it is considered public, so do we need to go ahead and implement that policy right now, and we get it rated, do it again, and make sure everyone goes along?
Well, you don't have to re-adopt that policy, but it might be good to attach that to whatever, perhaps it would be best to give us a couple of weeks to actually draft up what the commissioners for might want to do on that, and attach those conditions, and that be part of the packet when people want to use the property, have them understand. Now, these are the requirements you've got to fulfill.
Okay, yeah.
The number probably maybe at least a half of them are still better back. There was a group that was, on the side of this board, the D Command was wanting to post specific artifacts or infrastructure on ground itself. We first backed it.
Right.
Wanted to ensure that we're not in that territory.
Yeah, the distinction there, and it's kind of hard, this is sort of ephemeral stuff, but the distinction there is between private individuals using government property to speak and the government itself speaking. When you allow placement of a monument on government ground, the government is speaking.
Okay, so do we need an order, a motion or today to appoint, how can you be the spokesperson for that?
You can do that, yeah, and then perhaps for the next meeting, we could, we can flesh out what the procedure is going to be to unfold.
Anytime anybody asks me, I always tell them that we have rules to go by. I always tell them, you can't put anything in the ground, you have to pick up all your trash, whatever, so.
It would be helpful, I think, probably in my, certainly defer to Mike if he has input on it, but to have those requirements that we are obligated by THC to follow within the packet, so you understand you have to do this.
Okay, good, let's do that, I like structure, let's do it.
Or adopt it by the state.
Right.
Okay, good, thank you, Scott. Okay. You want some?
Yeah.
Do you want to vote on this today or pass it until we get a package from the county attorney?
Actually, I would like to wait to this, get some of my coverage.
When is Mrs. Chavez going to call you back, Shannon?
I'm not sure, I think she said it was sometime in October. She would have a specific date.
Okay, so we have time. Okay, we'll pass this and wait. Do you have something?
No, I think I thought we could appoint you.
And I figured that, you know.
We'll receive this.
It always comes in anyway.
So we can wait.
We can just do that, then we'll let you just vote on that?
Well, I think that's what we, I think, do, but I still like to see.
Yes, you're out planning, we'll plan to get a pack and put it on the agenda next time for that.
Okay, all right, number seven, Texas Department of Family and Detective Services, top four, E, non-financial contractor, consider an act upon the approval of contract with Potter County Child Welfare and to authorize just Hannah to sign the contract.
This is granted at the border of the first 20 years, it's just not to be.
Has there been any significant changes on it, or pretty much just a... Thank you, a motion.
No, I'm going to move to a group act, and the approval of contract between Potter County and Child Welfare to authorize to change and sign a contract.
Okay, you have a motion and a second on paper, Rachel and... For zero. Is this the one, is this original? Number eight, Potter County Extension Office to hear an update regarding activity hosted by the Potter County Extension Office. Good morning.
Good morning, Kelly.
We're good, how are you?
Good, and I just want to start off by saying thank you for your support over the last year, it's been a great year. We've had several new families join, and our pre-nutrition project, it kicked off really strong last year, but we had eight food challenge teams, which was about 30 kids, all in our small little kitchen, it was crazy, but it was fun watching them learn. And our clothing and textile project, it did very well this year, all our kids that went won first place at district, two went on to state, and then one, Cheyenne Bailey, she actually went on to nationals. So we go in January to Denver to represent Potter County, so I was excited, yeah. So we, Austin and I took 21 kids to state roundup, and so while we were there, we had two kids that received scholarships, Joanna Laurie got an $18,000 scholarship, and Laura Porter got a $10,000 scholarship, so they both started at WT this year, and they were very excited about that, so. This last spring, we had a leadership workshop series, and we teamed up with local toast pastors, and the kids learned a couple of speaking skills, how to write a speech, and we had 13 graduates from that workshop series, and so they all, they grew tremendously in their ability to critique each other's speeches, and so they said it really helped them, you know, in school and then also at our state competitions, so. We kicked off our new year, September 1st, we had 25 new families at our enrollment night, so we're excited. And our 4-H Council, they, man, they've got me running all I crazy, they are a group of really strong leaders, and they have started monthly community service drives, so each month they'll have a different charity that they're going to focus on. And then when I asked them what they wanted to see, what kind of programming and learning opportunities that they want, they said financial management. Several of our juniors and seniors, and they're like, we're fixing to have to pay bills, you know, get jobs if they didn't have jobs, and so that's going to be our focus for this year, is teaching them how to write a check, how to get a loan if they need a loan, or not get a loan and do it by cash, so just learning that aspect that they may not get at school. So, anyway, so we're excited, and we thank you for your support.
We're very welcome, thank you for that report. Your kids are doing very well, huh?
Yeah.
And no speaking credit cards.
Yes, that's a good thing. That's what we're going to teach them, so.
Unless you pay off.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, number nine, Roden Bridge, do you consider an act upon the proposal for progress to rack or rudder lane?
I guess I could introduce it. This is the, yeah, here, it's a process be going on for some time. This is the day that we're going to hold a public hearing where we can have comments from anyone that's out in that area that would like to speak.
Okay, is there anyone besides Mrs. Stone that needs to, that would like to talk?
Yes. We've talked to the other residents, and so far, they seem to still be on board, so we think we have enough support to, you know, even though we did mind the price increase in the last minute, that that caused for us a profit, but now, you know, we're still going to get that.
What was the, what was the, what was the increase specifically?
Seven thousand something, from 27 to, and we figured it might go up some, but not over 20%.
Sebastian, I'm sure you've gone over this with the financial column, when you found out about this, just to get that.
Yeah, we had 20%, just in case when we all were sort of into the same issue that we had with vision branches. But we'd also added in more culverts, we originally discussed separate eight hour up to 11, because property owners want access to your property, because once we cut those digits, it'd be hard to get across. But other than that, it's just a 20% increase for unexpected costs. It might not be that high, it might be that high.
So there's a chance it won't be that much?
Yeah.
A chance?
Yeah.
Small, a chance.
So the financials will be submitted to, to the auditor, Carrie, and that's how we'll determine if we're lower than the 35, we can't go higher.
Okay, so you have all the, all the property numbers listed here, and what are the yearly type that's going to be? And they're all okay there, everybody out there is.
So far, who'd you talk to?
The ones where I go to talk to, there's some that only Mr. Fowler can get hold of because he has to do it on the. Oh, okay. Is there anybody in the audience who wants to speak to this, anybody?
So the issue is about the order which is included in the act, that will go out in the court, wants to adopt the proposal to.
Yes, we, if we say go ahead, and let's do it, we have, the process is we have to send them out, but then there's, if you already have the hopes up there, hope yes, they want to proceed, then you can go ahead and fix this right.
Is it with joint?
That's what, that's what we lost. I move that we proceed with the improvements that have been suggested for Riker Lane.
Signing. Okay, I have a motion and a second on paper, Rachel and... Just ordering your tablet out of this today?
Yes.
Okay, number 10, request to vacate road, consider an act upon the request to vacate a planted alleyway, 104 Rin Street.
Mr. and Mrs. Carter, I think the material side is, so it's, but I'll be happy to try to answer the questions.
This is already fenced in there.
Yes.
We did this earlier, a couple of years ago for a neighbor, and it's an alleyway that was planted, but I don't think they're ever going to be used this way, and I don't see any reason we can do it. I move that we issue a vacation, plant at the alleyway at 104 Rin Street.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on paper, Rachel and... Okay, 11, sale of county property. Oh, this is the last time we talk about this today. We have to make a decision today, so.
We don't have to.
Then you read it first, sale of county property to consider in response to an inquiry regarding available to purchase the county-owned property, 2404 Southwest 6th Avenue.
I receive these inquiries, and I'm not quite sure what to do with it, I don't really have the active data, but again, there's three, if you do, except for when we sell property, there's three ways to go about it. One is to hire a broker, another is to do an auction, and the third is to see what we get. So I think step one is doing one more property, and if so, okay, you want to do that.
Going back to the original concern that I know, I also, because of the location of the property, what the, they entail for future growth that may encompass that area.
This is the one, this is the one next door to C and B Printing Business.
What is not that?
This is that big building next door to C and B, it's way up. And it's currently holding some property.
Yes, exactly.
So they mind?
Yeah.
So, so do we have a desire to place that to be, most likely, to be relocated?
I know this, I know it's been working on that, I've understood the range which we're meeting, but I, there's not going to be that, I don't have that swing. And this could be passed to the next meeting.
If they don't present someone with problems, kind of, I mean.
No, I mean, we just never know from time to time how long it's going to take to get a fine court over so we can dispose of that property, and right now it's being held as evidence. And it will happen if we decide to sell this property, we don't replace it with some similar capacity, we won't be seizing property in related cases, because we want everyone to put it. We have to safeguard it, make sure, we can't just shrink, grab it, and put it out on a parking lot somewhere, because it would be liable for loss. What size of area do you need? Probably about the same size, we keep that, we keep the storage in that building relatively full.
When we do.
Of course, again, that's, you know, predict when that's going to happen is difficult.
So what you're saying, basically, if you look at, basically, a flying eye and a death period, just.
Something.
But we had it sold last year, remember?
We were going to do that.
And then they backed out.
They backed out, right.
So that property had to be somewhere else then, the one, the stuff that we're storing, A-liners?
Well, after they backed out, we had another seizure.
Okay.
Because we knew, okay, we have a place to put it, so, and we did clear out the batch that was there at the time of the sale.
If there's some interest in buying and marketing that property, I will confirm this status.
I think there is, I see someone from Keller Williams in the audience. Is that what you're, you're here for that?
Yes.
Yeah, I know, I know what you meant, I know what you mean.
I, you know, my, my feeling is, I go to see as rent, these storerooms spaces that own something that's sitting out there deteriorating, I think. And not subject to property tax. And it's off the, the tax books. So I'm always interested in selling property if it's not absolutely necessary.
Well, maybe there are long, long-term buyers, would it be even beneficial to construct something like a...
Yeah, we have parking on Jackson Street. I guess you'll do that, yeah.
I've presented that quarter several occasions, constructing a metal building after, and I agree it would be the natural location to do it.
Yeah, I just want to say, I'm a real estate agent, this is my broker, and I've had, and the facility that we are looking at, 2404 Southwest 6th, is wanting to be a childcare facility. They need more parking, and in order to go with state guidelines, we need more space. And they're growing, and they're on a wait list, and that would be the perfect area. They're on Line Avenue right now, so they would like to stay in the same vicinity, so that is going to be the, the future purpose of this building.
That's a pretty big building, what your purpose is.
A childcare facility, they're needing, I mean, of course, on Line Avenue, you don't have much parking at all, but with that property, you have plenty of parking space for parents to come pick their children up after school. It is also a martial arts athletics center too as well. So they have different classes too, and they'll have all of their buses and their transportation parked on that parking lot as well.
So even the opportunity to expand this. What is his timeline, is he in a big hurry to do this, or would you like to do it quickly, or can we have time to get rid of our?
We would rather have time to work out all the kinks and make sure it's in order, straight in line, and he's very patient.
Okay, before you would actually present the final pitch, please.
And, I mean, knowing from knowledge, there's asbestos in the building, of course, there's stuff in the building as well that needs to be taken care of. I know, I'm not sure about the sale of last year, how much it was going for.
A lot, it was going for a lot.
But, yeah, way more than, way more than what it looks like it's worth. Brad has it as 641,000, around there, estimated, with the problems that it has on it, that is just like, psh.
We're wanting to get also bits for that, that's just removing one of the timeline and the tag and all that stuff.
It's still a process, how we want it to sell.
It is a process, right.
We still have to decide how we want it to.
It's definitely very interesting. Okay.
Okay, thank you so much. We'll be, keep in contact with us, okay? We'll be on tap.
I shall go keep you.
Okay.
Thank you.
What's our next project?
That's good. Do we need to?
Well, let's just, what do you want to do?
Everything for sale. I kind of agree with the commissioner, the church said, I'd rather rent a spot for the A-liners if we needed to, except that we can put that thing on the tax form, so let's do something.
I want to build, I want to build a.
Do that, too. We got the property that we can, we can put that on.
Or do we need the money for that right now?
Sell a property.
So. There's only three hits.
It's hard to speak against that out here.
That's what I'm saying, because the, another person wanted to put something else in there, but it's not.
But since we, I don't care, it's plenty of time, right, at least, I would just, I would just add some to the next.
So how much do you think it would cost to build up 10 buildings for this A-liner? Just the top of your, top of your head.
That's right.
Was there not a building out there on moving property that this stuff could be stored in, or if we just renovated it?
I condemn two of the buildings out there, we only have one on the southeast corner of property, but y'all need electricity and lights in these, and years ago, the commissioners shut down all utilities to free buildings. What's going to happen to the?
What's going to happen to the shop that's sure?
The east side at the sheriff's currently, and what we're hoping to do is bring it into the court. Our city needs a place, Scott needs a place, that'd be a nice built place. If you could put this off a little bit longer, I know you're looking at.
We could rent for a few months too, till that's all.
Living in twenty eighteen, February twenty eighteen, we're ready to occupy the new buildings.
So, Ron Fishman, you built one, just, I'm going somewhere with visitors and purpose.
We're talking just the building, just the.
I mean, one's another.
We got one. We got one.
It's probably three, four hundred and eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Five hundred thousand?
Just depending on the size.
So, y'all have heard of Ernest's money, right? Five hundred thousand too much to ask for Ernest's money? Five hundred for ten buildings.
Arden.
Five hundred for ten buildings with electricity and air.
I would say yes, it's just all arden, they want to take a bunch.
It is that building. You don't need one.
Okay.
These advertisements I'm told is about how you can build these buildings like a church or whatever, really cheap. One for five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, so we want to just pass this and until, until we hear no more?
Just hang on, I'll get your calls.
Okay. No, I don't, I was.
Go back with it.
And then it's a big building, a lot of storage here, it's the only thing that we can get.
Fifteen thousand square feet.
Huge town, yeah.
Scott, isn't that, isn't it pretty packed right now, what we have now? There's no, there's no walk-in room in it right now? It's, it's that full right now? It gives that many machines of A-liners in there right now? There's no walk-in room? I just want to make sure I stay correct on that.
Last time I.
Yeah, that's what I was told, it was pretty good, it was very good.
Yeah, we should.
When the process been auctioned?
Yeah, hopefully, yeah, we'll be.
So you auctioned it all, you auctioned it?
Yes, we're trying to do it right now.
There's our interview.
Well, I mean, you guys control where that goes, but I don't think we can auction it. I haven't played it out.
I'm not, I'm just worried about, I just want to know.
Yeah, yeah, we should actually do this.
Yes, it should be the next, it's, we're on it right now, auctioning, it's been advertised and court finding our name base as we speak.
Okay, good. I'll hold this crisis until we know more. Okay, Mike, you were reporting various fire payment projects.
So you need to reach your cost. I like it. Pardon my.
Paragrams, the Baxter Building is a hundred percent complete. I've got the final pay up within my office, I'll be going over that today to get that processed. We have received closeouts. The Food Corps is a hundred percent complete. The Cody Building, we did a walkthrough last week with the roof consultant and the contractor. We had issues where the contractor was basically not agreeing of what the consultant said needed to be done, we pulled a punch list. So I directed them last week, I went off of these final pay up until our discompleted purpose packs. So hopefully that should be completed by this Wednesday and then we can get this project finished out. The Fire Station Five project, the fire that happened out there on Easter Sunday, I'll be working with Pat. I'm going to try to set up a pre-bid, pre-contractor meeting for this Thursday. Commissioner Kelly, I'll note, copy you when that meeting's going to be, like we've had in the past, to get all the contractors together. We've got to get that project going to where Pat can ring the calls to the Commissioners Court. Santa Fe Terracotta Project, we did a walkthrough last Thursday morning with the contractor, issued change order number one on that project for thirty-two thousand dollars. We still anticipate that project to be completed by the end of October. County Extension Project, flooring, we start that this week, the last of the phase of that work to get that project completed. Santa Fe Elevator Mod Project, we have a meeting this Wednesday. We discuss where we currently are on the project, the ship that failed a year while back. I've got some emails I'll get into today to see what that's going to cost. We do have the contingency money to cover any costs there that exceeds, what the court's allowing me to bring that to the Commissioners Court. Sheriff's Department Project, the committee met last Thursday. We presented a hundred percent construction documents and opinion of probable cause to the court. I mean, to the committee, they have approved that to come to the Commissioners September twenty-sixth to receive her permission to go out to bid. That's it.
Thanks, man. Number twelve, uh, number thirteen, sorry. Employment items, to consider an act of public legal employment items, rate management, designation of destitute, non-employment, hard to take the waters, not ten. Collections, full-time position of Francis Bagley, paid the warrants to the fourth for thirteen weeks. Road and Bridge, retirement of Diamond Ray Sutton, August thirty-first, through designation of listed penalist, not involved. And elections, a dear hire of Juan Pacheco, who's temporary, part-time PTE. Part-time, part-time employee, yeah, thank you. O M G. They need for extra help with upcoming elections or our state receiving voters. War from September twelfth through February eighth. To change employment of Cassie Westo, except you heard from part-time employee to full-time employee from September twelfth through September tenth. That's all, just with the election, we should go back to part-time?
Actually, at that time, I actually moved to other.
Oh, okay. Okay, need a motion in this?
We approved the employment items, that's presented. Signing.
Have a motion ninety-second, I'll favor Rachel in. Jail report today, the five hundred and forty-three individuals in our jail, ninety-two of them are females, but I've seen early children. I don't have the right timeline for students today. Since the sheriff's going along, he did that in that department.
You did your best.
You tried so hard. It's just, it's just okay, John. Just a really quick reminder before we adjourn, Tri-State Fair is coming this weekend, so everyone go out and enjoy and eat some food and get some fun and search later in the county, so. Okay, anything else? Nothing else, we will adjourn.